All right. Good morning, everyone, and thanks very much for coming on today and joining our session here on Recollect. We do have a few people that are still going to join us along the way, but I'll perhaps start with some introductions. But a lot of our existing clients have come along and joined us today, both from Recollect and from Datacom IT. But for those that don't or haven't met me before, my name's Richard Wilson. I'm the Business Development Manager for Datacom IT and in turn, of course, the Recollect product. Joining us today also, hopefully, I think, top left of your screen is Roger Mills. Roger is a Recollect consultant, a digital preservation consultant, looking after the Recollect solution. And our special guest today is Melanie Rush, who's the Digital Archivist from Ipswich City Council. And she will be providing a different overview. Ipswich have recently implemented the Recollect solution. And Melanie will be showcasing both her Recollect site as well as some of the educational resources that she's been able to incorporate into that. And facilitating today's meeting, top right of screen is Christine Chetefany, who is the Marketing Manager from Datacom IT. So she's been responsible for all of our communications out to you. So again, thank you all for coming along. I guess a lot of you may already be aware of the history of Recollect and Datacom IT. Just as a bit of a quick overview, Recollect is a software-as-a-service solution that was developed by a company similar to Datacom IT in New Zealand, known as New Zealand Micrographics, back in 2011. And the product itself had become so popular and deployed around both Australia and New Zealand. The Recollect became its own entity as an organisation. And then in 2019, Datacom IT then came on board as the Australian reseller for the Recollect product and the implementation specialist here. And today we've been working with clients across the country implementing the solution. So today's event will be primarily run by Roger, who's going to provide an introductory overview of the Recollect solution, followed by Melanie, who will be focusing on her Recollect site and those educational resources. We very much welcome people if they have any questions. You will find in on your screen at the bottom, there should be a tool menu or bar that enables you to select and lodge a question. If you did have a question anytime during either Roger or Melanie's presentation, please just drop that question in there. I'll keep an eye on that and interject and raise that question. If not, we'll certainly have question time at the end where we can pick up any other questions that you may have. And also, you may find, depending on how you're looking at the screen there at the moment, on that toolbar, there's an option to make this webinar full screen. And you may find that'll give you a better experience, certainly when our presenters start sharing their screens so that you get a full screen view rather than perhaps a smaller view. So if you're not on a full screen, I'd certainly recommend doing that. So I guess I'll now hand over to Roger and he will commence with giving us that introduction on the Recollect solution.
Thanks very much, Richard. I'll just share my screen. I'm hoping everybody can see and hear me okay. Datacom IT team, have we got everything in place here? Let me know if you can't hear or see this.
That's all looking good. Thanks, Roger.
Okay, great. Look, thanks, Richard, for the introduction and the opportunity to give you an overview of Recollect today and how it can be employed by libraries and archives and museums and even educational institutions to make accessible digital and physical collections as well as records online. I guess as a way of introducing today, I'm the Recollect Implementation Project Manager, as Richard said, and I get to see a lot of what clients do with their collections and their implementations. And I've been particularly impressed with Picture Ipswich and what Melanie's achieved with her school resources collection and the way that she's integrated the school curriculum into the Recollect site. You know, because really it's that kind of community engagement that I think is a cornerstone of the success of a contemporary collection or archive. And hence why we're focusing on the potential of Recollect as an educational resource today. But let's get into the nitty gritty of it. The best way really to think about Recollect is that it's an online digital asset and collection management system as one unified platform. So it stores and manages all of your digital assets in a database as well as functioning as a community engagement solution. So in other words, it provides your community and staff with a way to discover content through descriptive metadata and through the linked data model of metadata configuration that Recollect uses. Provides access to information by being able to view lots of different types of content in one platform and from any internet-connected device. And it also allows your community to engage with your collections through moderated functions that enable community to tag and comment on items and share their knowledge and discoveries with their peers to provide contributions to your Recollect site by uploading their own content and really creating, if you like, a storehouse of community knowledge. And of course, the database also allows you to manage your content into a workflow as well as preserving archival material through the add-on digital preservation module. So let's look at some of the basics. Recollect is hosted in the cloud by AWS or Amazon Web Services. And it comes with unlimited storage capacity with a 500GB entry point. And it's got, look, it's got all the tools you need for media transcoding of audiovisual material. You can upload 3D OBJ files, audio, video. It has OCR transcription on ingest with all of that text. Then in OCR layers, becoming immediately searchable in the site through the homepage. There's no limit on the amount of users that can use the site. It provides tiered access and privileges for editing and administration purposes. And that can be moderation of contributions or analysis and reporting of site statistics, all with the ability for administrators to manage this into a workflow. And of course, it also integrates with the Trove Research Portal and has an OAIS-compliant digital preservation module, as I was just saying, which allows you to ensure that you preserve and guard against file obsolescence and bit rot and those sorts of preservation issues that many archives and collections may run into. So really, the key to Recollect's discoverability functions is, as I was just saying before, it's universal digital viewer that allow you to view a range of multimedia assets, including these 3D objects from your browser and to tag and link content within your collection. But you can also play and caption tag audiovisual content such as oral histories as well as the geo-referencing functionality, which is integrated with the Google Maps API from any internet-connected device. And I'll be demonstrating these functionalities in live sites as we go through. But what I thought we'd do is we'd just start with some of the design aspects of Recollect in terms of the way that clients can customise their design. We see here the Wesley College Archives and Art Collections. One of the first things, of course, you see is the, what we call the tax on me or dropdown menus, which just provide users with and into a part of the site based on a particular topic that they might be searching for. I should preface what I'm saying here in that all Recollect clients go through an implementation process that is an 18-week period in which we workshop personas and data and UX design. And so each site is really designed with the personas or users of that institution in mind. The very top here is what we call the Carousel Widget or Featured Items Widget. It operates either as a carousel or as a static image, as Wesley has here. But if we jump into perhaps another site, such as the Living Histories University site here, you've got quite a large carousel widget which will move through every couple of seconds. And you can click on any of these images and it'll take you straight through into that particular item within your collection. What you immediately see here too, of course, is the metadata down on the right-hand side. So you've got links to the collection, related organisations, identifiers and materials as well. And if you're an administrator, you may well see material that's hidden from the public as well. If you look at the Morton Bay Regional Libraries, again, you've got the carousel. But underneath that, we've got what we call Browser Widgets. And Browser Widgets, again, is a way of jumping into content within the site based on a particular type of collection. So you can go straight into, say, the Oral Histories, for instance, and jump into an item from there. And of course, we'll be looking at oral histories a little bit later. We can also include transcriptions here as well. You can see the way that they've laid out their tax on me menus so that you can then link, say, in this instance, to a separate collection in the Briarby Island Museum. Got the Auckland Grammar School Archives. They've gone for another look, a different look themselves. You'll start to see some commonalities within these. You've got your introduction, you've got your Browser Widgets and your Showcase Widgets. We'll just showcase most recent photographs or images that the organisation may wish to showcase. Another recent implementation that we've done is the Reserve Bank. They've customised their Browser Widgets here, which you can see along the top. And beneath that, they've decided to showcase their collections through what we call the Collections Widget, which again will take you straight into a particular collection. Let's say the Sir Robert Gibson Collection. This is what we call an information item, which will be information about a particular topic or person. And this is where the benefit of Recollect really comes in because you can link your assets to your information hubs through the metadata that you provide within the metadata templates. Yeah. And so on the left-hand side here, we've got the main navigation menu for people who just want to browse content, they don't know what they're searching for. You've got a more defined search functionality where you can search within the data. You've got a My History function, which enables you, if you're logged in, to save particular searches so that you build up a collection of items that you might have used or searched for at one point, as well as a more menu that you can add any additional items, such as information about registering or logging in or contacting the organisation themselves. One of the fantastic features, I think, of Recollect is this ability to be able to view three-dimensional objects from a browser. And this is done without having to download any third-party software, simply by looking at the 3D viewer. And that allows you to then be able to view an object in three dimensions from your browser window. So particularly useful for objects and researchers that might be interested in, you know, looking a little bit more at the texture or the contours of a particular object such as this. The Image and Document View provides some really useful resources here. This is what we call the Document View, which allows you to view the OCR layer and edit that. If it's a particularly old document, there might be errors in this. So you can simply just edit and can't see anything that I want to edit here, but you might want to just move that up there. And then save that and you've made your edit. This is particularly useful for handwritten documents. And this is actually a document from the Picture Ipswich site of a postcard that goes back to the First World War. And it's obviously come from the front. And as you can see here, it gives you the ability, while the OCR won't, we just bring up gobbledygook of that type of information, it allows you to be able to actually transcribe that. So let's say, let's just transcribe the first few lines there. My dear son. Just a few words. And so you could crowdsource the transcription of ancient or old handwritten text like this. And it just provides a way for you to be able to provide that information. Of course, this then becomes searchable within the homepage of the site. And of course, you can also lay out your documents, as the University of Sydney have here in decades, as they've done with the Honysua Student Magazine. Now, the whole way that Recollect structures this type of content is through what we describe as the Linked Data Model. And that's the way that the item-type spreadsheets or templates are created. And it just enables you to create, say, an information item about a person that might be linked to a document that might relate to that person. Perhaps it's a document that that person has created. It might be a councillor that has added some information to a council proceedings that might then link to an oral history about that councillor that might then link to an event that that councillor attended or was about that councillor and then link to a particular place. So it allows this sort of backwards and forwards relational links to create a way for your collections or the metadata in your collections to tell the story of those collections. And as a way of demonstrating this, the State Library of South Australia is a really excellent example where we have an information item, an information hub of Ernest Cedric Howell, who was an airmen in the First World War. And he tried to make that first Australia, England, London, Australia flight. And within this collection, as you can see down on the right-hand side, all of these metadata links take you through to items that are related to his attempt to make that flight, including his mysterious death over Kofu, where his plane actually disappeared. You've got letters from this chap called George Matthews, who describes his cynicism about Cedric Howell's father's attempt to get the Ministry of Defence to look into why the flight disappeared because there was an indication that there was some sort of foul play going on here in terms of the competition between the airmen to get here. So basically, it just allows you to create this whole story around the theme of this particular airmen. And of course, down on the right-hand side, then you've got Sir Ross Smith, who was the actual successful airmen in the end, and all the items that link to that first England-to-Australia flight, including manuscripts, videos, publications, transcripts and so forth. The other interesting thing that the State Library of South Australia has done is the timeline that was created around this event. Again, a really useful educational facility where you can create stories based on a timeline. So you can move through individual items. And of course, each item on this timeline is then a item within Recollect that you can click through to and find out all the information about it. And again, you've got all of these letters and metadata down on the right-hand side that provide this additional linking to other items within your collection. Of course, Recollect doesn't only facilitate digital records, but also archived records and catalogues. And the University of La Cato has done this in an interesting way where you can access, say, for instance, the Sylvia Warner Ashton Papers. And it links straight through to the library LMS so that you can then go and view those papers or make an appointment to go and view those papers from the LMS itself. And it's that sort of circular links that Recollect offers that allows you to link an archive or an LMS system with your Recollect database. Tagging and contributions. Now, this is where it really comes alive in terms of Recollect being able to engage your community, whether it's a community for a local library, council library or an archive or a university. They can comment on particular items, what we call recollections. So for instance, here, if you scroll down the left-hand side of the screen, you can simply add a recollection and add a comment in there and add to my story. And of course, this is then moderated by the site administrators. And it can either appear immediately on the left-hand side, if that's what you enable, or it is moderated. And the administrators can then contact the person who adds that recollection, asking for more information or just a simple accept. Yes, that's a great contribution to the archive. And it's this way of kind of sharing that community knowledge that can really enrich your collections. Whoops, let me just. Too many tabs here. You can also upload a range of different content. So go to the upload function. I think this is going to ask me to log in. It will do. These are the sort of functions that if you become a registered member of Recollect, that it allows you to do. So if you wanted to allow your patrons or your community to upload content, you can upload photographs, for instance, or publications or videos. They can fill out the title, add a geo-referencing location through latitude and longitude points. We'll ask you to provide a few extra details and then you can either save or exit without saving. And all of this within the Recollect site itself. Tagging is another useful functionality where it allows your community to tag content. Just because they're tagged doesn't mean that they're going to be shown the whole time. But on any Recollect image, if you want to see the tags, you can just show the tags. And if, for instance, a tag is a link or a person already within the collection, you can simply click the link, the hyperlink on the tagged image, and it'll take you through to that particular item within Recollect itself. Talked about oral histories earlier on. Here's an example of being able to caption tag an item. Oops. Where's it gone to? Might have to jump out of my slides briefly here. As you can see here, an oral history by Beryl Harris in the upper hut area with Upper Hut City Library Heritage Collections and being able to add caption tags. You can open that up to your administrators or editors or even your community if you so wish. So for instance, if you wanted, if Beryl Harris was a, she was actually a recently well-known New Zealand author, but she does talk about swimming here, say she was a famous swimmer and you wanted to know about her early. So you can jump straight through into her talking about swimming within the video itself or within the MP3 itself. What we might do is just have a little look in the back end under the hood of Recollect. I should say that the Recollect templates mirror exactly what you see there on the right-hand side. So where you have, and these are completely configurable. So where you have your item number, you'll see your item number on the right-hand side, then your series, document type, description and so forth. Of course, when you get your Recollect instance, these are blank canvases. So you can create your metadata template in any fashion that you want, whether that's, you know, staying with a Dublin Core or Mark style template or perhaps it's more of an archive-based system like the Australian Series system. You can create these based on however you want to see them on the page. And of course, once you've created the templates and added some sample data, that gives you a good indication as to what it will look like on the page. And if you don't like, for instance, if you wanted to see the date at the beginning, you can simply move them around and save and exit. And that will change the way that the metadata is provided. And of course, it's with these backlink titles that allow you to then to link, say, in this case, a document to a creator, organisation or an exhibition and so forth. And this is the way that you create those linkages within your metadata. And that really kind of brings us to the end of what I've got to show you today. But just to summarise really, you know, Recollect is a really comprehensive digital asset and collection management system as a unified platform, which handles both your digital and physical collections. It's flexible and scalable, so you can look to the future and think about what you need. And Recollect will always be able to facilitate that. And as I've just been demonstrating it, you know, it has such strong community engagement tools, which Melanie is about to present to us. Excellent in the way that you can engage your community and school resources or in wider ways in terms of them uploading content, commenting on items and so forth. Of course, you can contact either myself or Richard Wilson, who introduced the presentation. And I think what I'll do now is just come out of these slides.
Thanks for that, Roger. I guess just while we're transitioning between Roger and Melanie sharing her screen and her presentation, we haven't had any questions there for Roger at this stage. But if anyone did have any queries, happy to take those now, just before Melanie starts. Otherwise, of course, we can come back at the end and cover off any questions.
Right, so let's see where I am.
Just stop your screen sharing, I think, Roger. On the actual toolbar at the bottom of the.
Trying to do that. Now it's the slides.
On the toolbar on the bottom of the webinar.
Yeah, I can't actually see that right a second. Let's just go back to Safari. Let's see this. Yeah, I can't actually see this.
So I think opened up in Safari, is that right? If you open up your Safari browser.
Yep.
The storm. And it would be, or it should be a toolbar if you hover towards the bottom, should come up and have the.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at Safari right now and I can't see it. Christine, can you jettison me from the session or? I can't see it.
Got one question. Oh, thanks, Michael.
Can I stop that sharing?
Let me hang on a second. I've got this back now. It was hidden beneath the.
All right. And Melanie, did you want to try now sharing your screen? Just, I have a question here from Jacinta, just while we're transitioning. Melanie, you can share your screen if you like, but the question from Jacinta was, can you ingest patron records into the platform as part of the implementation project? And I'm not sure if you mean by if these are users of the system when you refer to patrons. But if that was the case, then yes, we can import users who will have a login to the system and their access rights. That's correct. Yes, library members, yes. Yep, no, they definitely can be ingested as part of the system. All right. Okay, Melanie, over to you now.
Okay, thank you. And I hope everybody can hear me because I can no longer see the screen that I'm sharing from.
They're all good.
All good? Excellent. So we started our, well, Picture Ipswich itself has been around since 2008. And this is our third platform for the collection. For those who don't know, Ipswich is in South East Queensland, just to the west of Brisbane. Our history, obviously, we have a very long indigenous history. Our European history starts in the 1820s as a convict settlement. And then we moved. And then we move on to European settlement. So we do have a, a long history here. And we're also very much an industrial town. So railways, coal mining, a lot of manufacturing took place here. Returning to our, our Recollect journey, we first started looking in 2019. So it was only a few months for me into the job, but I'd been working with the collection as a volunteer for a number of years prior to that. So I knew the collection very well and I'd worked with both the previous two platforms of the website. So it didn't take much to convince us to move over to Recollect. In fact, it was one of the first platforms that we looked at. And then I did an extensive research of 50 other platforms from around the world before I came back to Recollect. And said, this is definitely the one for us. Roger gave a very good summary of all the reasons why we decided to go with Recollect. You'll notice that our homepage is a little bit different in our layout from some of the other examples that Roger was showing. So we still have our taxonomy at the top where we've got our dropdowns. These are divided into decades. We also have the all important user guides front and center, right there at the top. And our favorite, I think it's everybody's favorite button, is the surprise me button, which when you click on it every time, it'll take you to a completely different random asset in the collection. And I know a lot of people who have become addicted to the surprise me button and can spend a lot of time there. On our homepage, we're featuring our collections. So very much love the ability that Recollect gives us to create collections for, collections within collections is how we're looking at it. For instance, this larger tile here is our feature tile. So every few weeks, we will change it to a different collection. This week, we've got it as our FA Whitehead Studios. So this was a studio that was around from the 1880s up until 2017. We have a lot of items that have come from this collection from the community. And we've also got about 7,000 items that have come from the studio itself before the, you know, the family wound it up. So that's one of our most popular collections that we have on Picture Web Switch. Because pretty much everybody has, had been photographed by Whitehead Studios at some point. School photos, sports photos, family photos, everything. We also, architecture is a very, you know, in Ipswich, we're known for our heritage homes, our Queenslanders. And so our architecture collection is very important to us. And if it eventually opens up. So we're featuring a lot of our homes. This is a progressive collection. We will be continually adding to this content. But as you click on each one, there's a, a history behind the homes. And our collections will play a very big role when I go to show you our school resources a little bit later. It really shows how we're able to connect our content and connect this content for, for teachers to be able to access. So obviously, architecture, people and families, our businesses and industries, places. So we've got a history of all the suburbs and localities around Ipswich or feature there. Plus our, you know, there'll be waterways, so from the river, which everybody in Ipswich is well and truly aware exists after this month. And communities, schools, sports events, et cetera. Chasing Our Past at Home is a webinar series that we've started running since the beginning of the first lockdown. And we've run over 20 of these webinars. They usually go from an hour up to an hour and a half. And it's trying to run them monthly, lots of different topics, very popular series. So we can regularly get anywhere from 40 to 60 plus attendees on one of our webinar nights. So it's a great content that we've been able to present to the community, you know, to do it live on the night, but then also to be able to record it and put this into our website to make this an actual living resource that we can have people view at any time and also become, of course, a school resource. So very popular series in our Chasing Our Past. And Roger did mention the map search, but I think it's one of my favorite features. I will never get tired of zooming in and looking at all the little pins that represent all of our photos. I love that, absolutely love it as we go in. Okay, now we'll get to our school resources. So our first, Ipswich City Council's first experiment in creating school resources for history started back in 1996. And the Ipswich Heritage Education Kit was designed by one of our local historians from Buchanan. So this very much took a thematic approach and was focusing on themes such as our convicts and early settlement, daily life, transports, of course, railways, river transport and the like, industry and business, you know, coal mining, woolen mills and some of the other longstanding businesses that we've had in town. And it looked at our cultural diversity. So early on, we had a very strong Welsh population, which had a big impact on the city, not only through coal mining, but also that cultural impact with our choirs and the Stedfords. And then, you know, symbols of Ipswich place names, et cetera. There were a series of activities, these were all based on excursions, you know, different walks, like little heritage trails around the city. There were some worksheets, but nothing was particularly age, age specific. What myself and Tanya Jen, who is part of Council's City Design Branch and the Heritage Team Leader, what we started to do during the first lockdown, and I understand today it's actually the two year anniversary of the first lockdown for COVID. So what Tanya and I started to do as a response to the schools closing down and people having to start homeschooling, was to collaborate together to design some new school resources that could be used by parents who were homeschooling, that could be used by teachers. It was just an easy resource about Ipswich history. And that would encourage people, you know, that maybe they could go around in their area, being COVID safe, go in their area and just learn a little bit about the history of their area. A few years ago, I did a teaching degree. So I am an historian, that's my background. And I've since done that one year graduate diploma in education. So I've got a, you know, I'm a qualified history teacher as well. So didn't want to use that in a school setting, but I'm finally getting to use that degree by creating these resources. So we've created a series of resources that were definitely based around the national curriculum and related to local history. We took what was already done with the, the 1996 Heritage Education Kit. And we've expanded on that. We've made it age appropriate as well. So this is our school resources page. And recently, we thought we would expand it also to cover some of the different subjects where we could apply Picture Web Switch content. So I'll show you some of them a little bit later, but we'll just quickly start with our history subjects. And I'll show you what we've done. So an introduction about it there. And then we come into this section. So these are our school resources. As you can see, at the moment, we've got from our prep year through to grade five. And grade six is almost complete. I'll click on grade one. At the top of our page, this is sort of reinforcing to us, but also to teachers or anybody who's homeschooling, just what the focus is in the national curriculum and what the inquiry questions are. Then we start to list our suggested resources and activities from Picture Web Switch. They should be appearing in alphabetical order. So we're starting off with events. And we have a little bit of a blurb about what this particular collection will contain and a few suggestions on how it could be used and how it could be related to the curriculum itself. So all of these are links to different parts of the collection. We also have those links appearing down here as our actual collections. So we mentioned earlier, family portraits. This is a link to a curated collection of different family portraits over, you know, over time. Below that, we have our school activity sheets. Which one should we go with? We'll go for the first one. So again, these were designed or written by myself and Tanya. And then we had, then would also from the City Design Branch, who actually designed the layout of these sheets. So here, we've got a little bit of a blurb, we have some pictures, everything of course coming from Picture Web Switch. There are some questions there. So it's an activity sheet that can either be used, as I said, in school, or it can be a starting point to show teachers how you can use local history and insert it. Because we all know that teachers, particularly the primary school years where they're having to teach multiple subjects, they may not be aware of local history. So we really want to help them to, to know what is available and how they can implement that into their class. So the, the whole idea of these, of this program is to sort of connect the classroom to the local community as well. All of these sheets, of course, can be very easily downloaded, which is another one of the benefits of the Recollect site. It's very easy to download and then they can print off the items. And as I said, we've got that for most of the subjects. So if we go into year five, again, we've got some suggestions of different resources, bit of a description of what our activity sheets are, also links for the activity sheets. So if someone's reading, doing about mining and Welsh settlement at Blackstone, in that activity sheet itself makes a reference to an oral history. So we've got a link there directly to the oral history. And of course, the activity sheets appear on that page. We are still working on our indigenous collection. So like really from year four on, there's a, a lot of potential for content there. We're just waiting to be able to liaise with the indigenous community to, to get approvals before we release that information or those, those activities. And we've also got a link here to the previous education kit. So that information is still there as well. And we've got some heritage trials that were specially designed for children in a few areas. So again, it's something that families could have done and schools who are based in these areas can do quite easily, just walking around and completing these activity sheets. So if I go back to our school resources page, as I said, we're also looking for ways that we can use the collection in subjects other than history. So geography is obviously a standout when we've got a lot of pictures of our landscapes and panoramas. There's a few different activities that can be used from the photos in a geography class. And same with, we have a lot, a big map collection. So we're giving a few suggestions, some town planning activities, et cetera, with our suburbs and localities. We also have, and you can see here, these are our collection hubs that link back to those topics at the top. But we've also got some school resources that come from some other sections of council as well. So Enviro Ed programs and not necessarily Picture Web Switch content, you would think, but obviously it's a Schools Project activity sheets here. So we've liaised with them and have this content available as well. So it's also available on the council's homepage. There's links to the Educators Link Program with these resources, but we also have them featured here. So it becomes a sort of one stop location to find them. And I'll show you our visual and media arts collection. So this is a good example of one that has been in collaboration with one of our local art teachers. So she's the head of the Arts Department at one of our high schools and has helped to provide some content or suggestion, suggested activities for how we could use Picture Web Switch in class. And then we've just spread it out, expanded on her ideas. So she suggested investigating significant contributions or creative and cultural expression in the region by examining the work of a prominent architect. We've then be able, were able to expand that initial idea by saying, well, here's the actual architects that you can look at. There's a whole lot of information that we've already done the work on. So this is the content. And I'd like to be able to see some more collaboration with teachers as we continue to develop this collection, that they can have the suggestion of, we'd like to do this activity. And then we can say, well, these are the resources that we have. And also maybe they can suggest a resource that we can then develop with the collection. So I think my time's just about out and I will leave it there. But please have a look at, at our school resources, have a read through and, you know, see what we're, we're doing and see if you can do something similar as well.
Melanie, thank you very much for that presentation. It's fantastic and, and it's clear that your passion, both for the content that you've got in your Recollect solution and obviously those educational resources really have shone through on that. So thank you, that was, that was fantastic. And again, opening, yeah.
Thank you.
It's also, just before you go on, Rich, it's also that collaboration with the community too, that Melanie was talking about, actually involving teachers in the development of content within the site. I think that's such an important thing. Why I've picked up on what you've done, Melanie, I think you've done an amazing job there. And you're pioneering new ways here with Recollect. It's the, one of the first sites to really explore this avenue. And having an educational background myself, I just think it's vastly underexplored at the moment. And you're doing a great job there. And I think there's, there's lots of areas that can, that it can be used in as well, including tertiary education, which is my background, so.
Well, we didn't touch on that, but we do have some connections with one of our local universities. So there is potential for some content being developed there as well. And I know I have been putting a lot of my past uni assignments up.
Right. I thought I saw a couple of those.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a few of them up there, which anything that's sort of local history or Ipswich based. So we're encouraging others to also contribute their assignment work that has an Ipswich theme.
Yes, yeah.
We have a couple of comments and, and questions, I'll just run through those. Gary Roberts has said, thanks to everyone for the presentation. And Laura Wolf thanking, thanking also Melanie for the great work. A question from Jacinta Clooney was saying obviously that they're fantastic resources. And are the worksheets copyrighted or can the other libraries reuse them?
Well, you can, the Creative Commons licensing, so that we can obviously allow them to be used in schools. For other libraries, you may just want to make them more to your local area. Ours are very Ipswich based. So you would have to change some of the references and adapt them.
Another message there from Cathy, thank you very much, Melanie, for great presentation. And she's looking forward to spending some time looking at what's available on Picture Web Switch. And from Tita, very interesting and informative. Thank you, thank you everyone for those, those comments and.
Richard, if I, if I might, I might just kind of go, go back to Jacinta Clooney's comment there about. about ingesting patron records. While you can ingest patron records, you probably have to ask yourself why you do that. I wonder whether the question is speaking to thinking about Recollect as a circulation-based system, which, just in clarification, it's not a circulation-based system. That circular links that I showed you allows you to link a library management system to it. So you can start and be looking at a record in a library management system, which will link through to Recollect and vice versa. But it won't, it's not a circulation-based system. So you can't, you can't scan a session records, for instance, on a book and then expect it to be updated in Recollect. It's a slightly different system. I don't know if that was the basis of your question, but I'll clarify that anyway.
So I think Jacinta's just typing out the question. It's another comment there from Patrick. "Thank you. It was great to see the education content can be added to Recollect." And from Tanya, "The colouring Ipswich pages are based on images from the Picture Ipswich collection. While creative for students, they're also a good collection for adults who like to colour."
Exactly.
So Tanya is my co-conspirator in the education collection. And yes, I forgot to mention the colouring in pages. We have colouring in pages based on our images, so they are very popular. I know whenever we print out a batch at events, they go very quickly. And it's not always kids who are taking them.
So Roger, Jacinta's just clarified there, it was more about having patrons to add tags and content. So I guess already having an account set up in Recollect, there would be some need to set up passwords and share that. But yeah, it can, can, of course, be done. So I think we've answered all the questions there. But I guess importantly, just for everyone that is still, do have another one there online with us, is that today's overview was very much an introduction and a very generic one from Roger. And for anyone that's no interest in looking further at Recollect and looking under the hood, we really invite people to reach out to us to have a personal demonstration where Roger would spend time with you before that to understand your collection and then try to tailor that presentation about perhaps how Recollect could be used for your specific content. So we really do invite people who are interested in looking at Recollect further to get in touch with either Roger or myself. And we'd love to convene a personal demonstration similar to what we've done here today, but for your organisation or focus solely on your organisation. So another question's come in from Joel. "On the topic of copyright, our library exists in a copyright grey area for certain users, but not the general public. Is it possible to hide sections of the collection from users depending on access level?"
Yeah. Yes, you can. You can provide varying levels of access to members or administrators or editors. And you can redact content from public view.
Very good. All right. Joel's just coming back there with another question. Yep, great, thank you. All right. Well, thanks once again to everyone for coming along. We really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to join us and allow us to give you both that overview of Recollect. And especially happy, I'm sure, everyone appreciated seeing what a fantastic job Melanie's been able to do with the Recollect platform for both their local history and those school resources. So thank you very much, Melanie, for joining us and presenting that to everyone. Thanks again, Roger, for providing that overview of your presentation. No worries. So thanks very much, everyone. You will receive some follow-up correspondence from us, just of course, thanking you for coming along. But we'll also send out an email with a link to view and download if you needed to share a recording of today's session. So we will send you a link for this. So if there were people in the organisation that couldn't make it today or you wanted to review it or to share that with other people, you will get an email from us with a link to view that. So thank you once again and stay tuned. We'll see you again in another one of our sessions, hopefully. Thanks very much, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Bye.